All right, so now being 6 o'clock, I'll call the Monday, December 2nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. We've got a couple of items on our agenda. At 6:30, we've got a special town meeting preparation discussion, and at 6:45, we've got a tax classification hearing. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record.
Just kidding.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Barry, did you want to see us about something?
When you get to talk about the town meeting.
All right.
I'm now the moderator.
Perfect. Awesome. All right. Well, why don't we just jump into it? So warrants paid, want to grab Liz's?
I thought I had till May to get my act together on this one. You guys going full.
This will be a trial. Yes.
It's like training.
Thank you. Okay, so under warrants paid, under the BOS budget line, $95.08 for some reimbursement in Kingston Sinorama. Let's see, under BOS, 23431, Sherwin-Williams and Santoros, and I believe that was for the Sheriff's Department who were doing the painting upstairs. And then also out of BOS, we've got $18,334.78, South Shore Generator, a large bill, looks like it's the fire station generator. Law Office, Ellen Hutchinson, that was ATB issue that we had. Steve Sorrow, reimbursement, and KP Law, the October bill, was $2,725.78. So those are the warrants paid. We've got a request to make an equipment operator appointment. I believe it's Ben Sorrow? No, Carl Johnson. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Carl Johnson as equipment operator effective December 9th, 2019 until 6:30, 2020. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, next item, I think we should probably wait for Liz on that one. Do we have anything in correspondence?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
First of all, we received the grant application for the lift for $95,000.
Terrific.
So I have to sign, I think the clerk signs this one. One of us has to sign this one. Maybe you need a chairperson. This runs through June 30th, though. So we don't have much time.
That we start the project or we?
No, but it's terminated.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
That does not give us much time.
Right, so it's contract end date here.
Okay.
So I think that's going to be first on the campus committee meetings, and the next one in the first week in January, I think it is. Because we're going to, and the way it works is we spend the money, and then they reimburse us after.
Does it have to be installed? Or could we just purchase the elevator?
I think if we can get a plan, then we can go back to them, because when we did the technology one, that went on quite a while, and they gave us some leeway. And I think they've done it on others. I just aren't sure if this department is going to be flexible like the Department of Revenue is.
Right, right.
So do we have a vendor or vendors that we're going to explore this with?
Nope.
Just because June will come in the snap of a finger.
An annosegment.
Well, maybe we can put out bits.
Yeah, well, and we'll have to, of course.
Yeah, we'll have to for the money.
Yeah.
We've got to figure out where we're going to put it.
Lordy, okay. All right, why don't, do you want to take a vote on this first to authorize me to sign the contract with the Executive Office of Elder Affairs for, what is this, $95,000 for the purchase of a lift?
Lift and related construction.
And that was the correct amount? Yeah, $95,000.
Yes.
Okay, Barry?
If we have to spend the money and they reimburse us, where do we get the $95,000 before the end of June?
That's a good question.
Well, I'm not sure how much we have in.
Compensation, the payments for authorized performance. I mean, we may need to do a warrant article.
We could do it on a special warrant article at town meeting.
At town meeting, at the annual.
Have the money available from the end of May and June.
To be reimbursed. Yeah, so that's really how it's going to have to be done.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I mean, it's filed money, so.
No, we're not locked into anything. If for some reason something fell through and we weren't able to secure this, we just lose the money, right?
We just lose the money.
Okay, there's no penalty.
No, there's no penalty. The only penalty is that they start to look at you.
Right. Okay.
Be really serious the next time.
Okay. All right, so I mean, motion.
So you made a motion. I'm.
We have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right.
Actually, while we're on that, so the not master plan, we're calling a campus committee now.
Until we get new K&amp;A.
And the next meeting is?
January 6 or 7, I think.
Let's see, 7th. 7th at 6:15.
So I'll probably need to miss that one. Maybe while we're talking about that, I can just extend the discussion a little. After eight or nine years on whatever iteration of that committee has been going along, I miss not being part of that, I would, so I might want to sit in on some of those.
Absolutely.
I'd love to avoid having to post the meetings, and that goes back and forth. I wonder if we could spend, I could spend just a few minutes with Town Council to see if he felt like we needed to post if we were both there.
Yeah, I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah, sure.
So I'll just check it out.
Okay, that sounds good.
It wouldn't be until February that I'd be able to attend a meeting anyway.
All right, so that was grant acquisition. Anything else under that, John?
I'll give you update on the townhouse signage.
Okay.
Since we just signed a warrant. So we've got all the letters. As I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, Rick Duchamp, he's a person in town, he runs 100% carpentry, is the man of this business. He offered to put him up for no expense. So we got Plumpton up.
It's a good start.
And it's just getting him when he's, you know, off work, so we can do it. So hopefully we'll have it up. I don't know how these storms can affect it.
So is that a little bit of suspense of what's coming next after?
Yeah.
You shouldn't put a question on it.
Dun, dun, dun.
I should have put a question on it. That would have worked. But it's all ready to go, we just need some time.
Right. All right. All right, well, why don't we go through the goals for 2019, long-range master plan for town campus, as we talked about just a second ago. The committee, we had our first meeting, was it, it was last week, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Kickoff and organize, and they are going to be looking at really two things. One will be the campus, and then the other will be building needs, land needs. I think the first, we're going to really look at the building and try to set up maintenance schedules, and try to find out, you know, the date of some of these larger pieces of equipment, air conditioners, furnaces, that type of thing, and really get organized with setting up a maintenance schedule so that we're not doing so much Band-Aid work, that we're actually spending money in a way that makes sense, and having, you know, systematically addressing these issues, and they'd be working on prioritizing, and John was there as well, so we talked a lot of good stuff.
John Wilhamsen was appointed chair.
Yes, good choice.
Yep, very good choice. So that was that one. Senior citizens need shared services, we continue to work on that. I think Liz is working with both Mike from Harbor and Charlie from Halifax to share their schedules. We had reached out to BAT, and John is reaching out to GATRA to set up meetings, and BAT was very interested in meeting with both Liz and Charlie, and they're going to set something up to talk about transportation that they may be able to offer the town and the associated costs. So they'll be working on that, and I don't know how you're doing with GATRA.
So I looked up, first of all, the executive director, I think, as I indicated, is leaving.
Right.
The mayor of Taunton is sort of the acting head. Okay, he seems to be the one who's calling the shots. I talked to Kathy Lanatra today and asked her if she would do the introduction, because there's no way they're going to pay attention to Plumpton Selectmen.
Okay.
So she agreed, and she's going to initiate a date.
Great.
And we'll get together.
Awesome. Okay, so we're working both of those angles then. All right, we just talked about some grant acquisition for the elevator, and now we've got a plan as how we're going to get the money with reimbursement. Continued professionalization of Town General and Financial Operations. Liz just sent out an email with the budgets for next year, and they are really kind of, there'll be more oversight in the process, and getting together with the department heads to have more meaningful discussions of said budget, so that's a good thing. Volunteer outreach, strengthen town committees, boards, and commissions, that's one that we've had some success on with, with people just coming out of the woodwork to help fill our boards and commissions. We're still, what, shy a little bit in cultural council? Any two members?
I don't know. Bruce thought she had somebody, maybe two last time, so I'm not sure where that's going.
Okay, so I think cultural council is the only one that I'm aware of, that we're still looking for a couple of volunteers, and they've got a small stipend from the state, and they can do some really nice work with cultural events for the town with that money. Explore affordable housing opportunities in use of town-owned land and buildings, that's a charge that we gave to the Town Campus Committee, so they'll be looking, doing that on our behalf.
I would like to, if the committee comes down to listen, the prospect room, I think we need an update of exactly how this is going to play out. I mean, lots and everything, and how approach Soul Homestead. I did talk to John Wilhamsen on a series of things, and he suggested that we go through Rick Burnett for Soul Homestead, as do the handshake introduction, which I mentioned to Liz. So I think that's where we, we've got to get in front of them.
What does this have to do with affordable housing?
Well, it's more the land for the park.
Okay.
The two.
Okay.
So the issue is that Middleborough owns land at Plumpton.
Right.
They apparently lease it, they lease, we know, they lease it to Soul Homestead. Apparently Soul Homestead can sublease it. We want to get parking lot, they currently pay taxes to the town of Plumpton. The rationale is we would pay that back as rental of the parking lot. And all we need to do is get in front of people and sort of solidify this. And there seems to be some sort of undercurrent, because everybody's talking around the program, and I just think we need to figure out how to solve this.
Well, we met with Middleborough before, with Lance Benjamino, didn't we? We met with the Middleborough Board to thank them for.
Yes, but I'm not sure the Middleborough Board wants to get involved or even cares about this. I think it's more Soul Homestead.
Okay.
Because as far as Middleborough is concerned, Soul is paying, the check comes, the taxes come from Soul.
They probably don't care.
It's $2,200 or some amount. It's $4,200, I think.
$4,200.
Yeah. So it just seems to me we should.
Yeah, I think part of the key is just having one front man, and Liz has been working on it, and really has just run into a lot of slowness or a lack of sense of urgency, particularly maybe town councils from one or more of the towns. But I mean, you're right, it would be good to get this solved. I mean, the sad part of this is, as I hear it, and as I'm sure you've heard it, is that the Board of Directors of Soul Homestead are not understanding that we are, we, Plumpton, is desperately trying to resolve this, and that in fact, I, you know, if there were any legal way for us to forego the taxes, we'd be glad to do it, but it's been explored, and we're not able to do that. So we've been looking for this creative solution, and I think this leasing thing is the creative solution. Liz keeps running up against just a lack of urgency.
I think we, if Rick Burnett, if Rick Burnett can make the introduction, maybe you go and do the presentation.
Yeah, I'm glad to do that.
Okay. All right, some more to come.
Yeah.
Okay, so Rick will reach out to Soul.
But we need to move it forward, because we're going to lose this if we don't get busy.
Okay. All right, support town administrators' goals, we continue to do that. Continue protecting towns' natural resources and unique character, continue to do that, and hopefully we'll have some warrant articles at the annual town meeting that will help us to do that. And encouraging fiscally sound governance, which we hinted at with the new budget process. So correspondence, you want to take a look, see what she's got?
Wow, I didn't expect this, so I'm a little underprepared. It was the best part of the job, though, until you guys took it away from me.
I know, I know. Well.
This is a standard contract for?
Is it just a copy of the one that they signed?
Yeah.
No, it's a different amount. So this is also the Executive Office of Elder Affairs for $7,000? What, it doesn't say what the purpose is.
This is the cultural council, I think.
Maybe we should wait for Liz on that, so we don't get this filed up.
This is the one that Joy Marble gets every year.
Okay.
Because she brought it in while you were chair.
Yeah, it's got her name on it, okay.
It's not cultural council, council on aging.
Council on Aging, okay.
All right, shall we wait for her? Do you want to go ahead and sign?
I'd wait for her.
Okay. And the only other thing in correspondence is the Plumpton-Halifax-Kingston Express, beautiful photo on the front of local budding ballerinas, and quite a long discussion about Plumpton Board of Selectmen Special Town Meeting.
Mm-hmm. All right.
And I bet you Mr. DeCristofano is in there with the beautiful.
I believe he is. Yes.
And while he's here, thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Looks like a labor of love.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Very nice. All right, so that's correspondence. Well, we're waiting for the town administrators' updates. We need to do the, at 6:30, we'll do the special town meeting preparation discussion. Might be prudent to take, what, a 10-minute recess?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we take a 10-minute recess and resume at 6:30.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, John.
Shall we adjourn to the wood panel boardroom?
Yeah. All right, now being 6:30, we're back in session. We're going to be talking about the special town meeting preparations. We've got our new town manager, Barry DeCristofano, with us here tonight.
Town moderator.
Town moderator. What did I say, town manager?
We'd have to pay him.
Former town manager, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Beckham, you used to have to do it all. Okay, so Liz, you want me to turn things over to you?
Sure. So I sent around a draft of the motions, which I think everybody received.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know, for you, Barry, is it helpful if we go just by article and?
Absolutely.
The quantum of vote required, and so on.
Oh, and Tricia's here, too.
Yes.
Town clerk, so we've got everybody, all the players here.
Want to join us?
Want to sit up front?
So Article 1 is, requires a two-thirds vote, and where that's a zoning one, you'll want to recognize the planning board chair.
Right, and they have to report out on it, too.
They do. So their report was printed in the warrant, but they should also give a warrant.
I'm going to ask them to read.
Yes.
For sure.
Yes, and that way they can note the date of the public hearing.
All right.
And I can resend these motions out again.
Yeah, please.
And just make sure that, say, for instance, for Article 1, that the planning board chair has it. Did you, do you want to leave that one as far as who's making the motion to the planning board, or did one of you want to make the motion? I know normally we kind of know ahead of time who might make the motion.
She should come from the planning board.
They should, the ones recommending.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so that's planning board.
All right, so you'll let Ann know about that?
I'm going to, yes, I'll send a group email to all of us, assuming my email's working.
Yeah.
Okay, so Article number two, that's the police chief-related article, that requires a majority vote.
I can make the motion on that.
Okay. So Christine Joy for Article 2.
Someone from your board will also speak to that?
I can speak to it as well.
Okay, so Christine Joy, motion and speaking. Article 3 is the speed limit reduction article, that requires a majority vote.
And I'm glad to make the motion, and I'm glad to speak to it.
Beautiful. Article 4 is to come up with the $12,501 to pay the required 20% match on the Council on Aging ban.
So are they going to speak to that?
It should be Joy Marble, but if she is not there, I'll.
Okay.
Okay, and that one requires a two-thirds vote.
Right.
You probably should just plan on speaking to that one.
Yeah, I think, yes.
Okay, so Article 4 will be John Fainer, and that's a two-thirds. Article 5 are some changes with respect to the animal control regulations and concerning the fee structure. Interestingly enough, Town Council said that he was unaware, this was presented to us, it came from the animal control officer, and went through the by-law review committee very briefly. But this was something that was presented as though, like, the state had updated their regulations, thus ours needed to be updated to follow suit. And council was, I don't want to say unaware of it, but a little like, oh, I didn't know that any action was necessarily required. But nonetheless, he did help kind of redraft this a little bit. He felt like the strike-through and bold format made more sense, so that's how it got printed in the final version of the warrant.
So.
That's a majority vote, and that's by law review, so I was going to send it to Alan. I think he's prepared to speak to it. He and Ken Thompson were in communication with the animal control officer, so.
Is he going to be there, the animal control officer?
That I don't know, I can invite him. But I think Ken and Alan were.
I always think it's a good idea to have the people who are the firsthand knowledge people there, if possible. So if he can be there, if we can have the COA person there, if we have one before that, that's always better.
So I will invite those individuals, but for Article 5, we can plan on Alan Wheelock making the motion and being kind of the primary.
That's fine.
Speaker on that.
You probably need his name, though, the animal control officer, because you're going to have to, you, so he can speak in front of the audience.
Right. Article 6, this is a Board of Assessors article. This requires a majority vote. So I can forward, I already did, but I'll do it again, the motions to Wendy, and I'm assuming that Ethan will take the lead on that, or a member of the Board of Assessors. And same thing for Article 7, that too is a majority vote, Board of Assessors, and I'll verify with Wendy who from the board will be doing that. Otherwise, the warrant was posted successfully, so thank you, Tricia, for that. We're having it, it was sent out to WePrint today after some different difficulties with the post office, and so on and so forth. It's coming at quite a price tag, so I'm wondering if, going forward, if we have kind of a spontaneous special town meeting in the future, I don't know if that's something that maybe we take up at a later time. Maybe at the annual, we see what people think and kind of take their temperature about the order. Doing all this mail.
We've got a pass STM right in this room.
This is the question of, do we have to?
But printing it, printing the warrant.
The mailing of it to all the households.
But you know, maybe we could do a warrant article to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to post it electronically for special town meetings, you know, in the future.
For a special one that's not in May, that's like at a different time of the year, I mean, it would, it would save us a considerable amount of money.
I think we got to talk to you, because specials are always considered as a way of.
Getting around.
Right.
I think we need a little more discussion before we make a decision.
Okay.
I agree. Council did clarify, though, that there are no legal ramifications to not doing the mailing, so it's just something to keep in mind.
And we don't do them often here, and this is like the third one in the 25 years I've been here, or fourth one, maybe.
Yeah, they aren't something that we.
I was, he is, and I only did one.
Okay. That's it.
Terrific.
The school is ready for us, and.
Okay. All right, Tricia, do you have any questions?
No. I have, I haven't heard back from the police. They have to provide a police officer, like a peace officer.
Okay.
So that's an expense for the clerk's office.
Okay.
I think they have to, even if it only takes us an hour, they have to get.
Four hour minimum.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
When was the warrant posted? Just so we get an official date.
I think it was November 26th. It was last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
So was it posted at the library?
November 26th. In all the locations.
Okay, great.
A little minor point, on the warrant, the Board of Selectmen votes were printed, they were all 2, 0, or 02. I unfortunately had to be away, but I'm in total agreement with my colleagues on how they voted, so I presume that'll come up somewhere along the way.
I'm sure it will, yeah. Okay. All right, Barry, do you have any more questions?
No more questions, but I'll coordinate with you two in the coming couple of weeks, just because I've been given from previous moderators a list of the logistics to deal with, and I just want to make sure somebody's covering something what I need to cover.
A script of?
No, not so much a script, like, you know, are we all set with table and with chairs set up, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. We can all do that by email, we don't have to take up time.
And Town Council will be here?
He's supposed to be, I will verify again.
That'll be Greg. Greg?
Greg.
Good corporal.
I sent the report to KP Law.
Okay.
We were having the special, and on the date.
Okay, perfect.
Back, I think it was October.
Right, and he's been involved, like, he helped with the motions and everything, so.
It won't be a surprise to him.
No.
Will they have a special form that they want to know if there are any upcoming specials?
Okay.
And so I just sent that to them.
Good, so we've got all the bases covered.
I think so, yes.
Perfect. How quickly would you anticipate having the minutes from the meeting completed, in general? Something like this?
A week, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, depending on what's going on in the office.
Okay.
I think I have 30 days, but I'd like to get it done as quick as possible, and having the certificates of vote ready for Secretary of State's office, Attorney General's office.
Beautiful. Okay.
Everywhere it needs to be reported.
Okay.
So.
Great.
As soon as possible.
Awesome. That is great news.
Then I can have a good Christmas.
Exactly. Exactly. You can relax until May.
Yeah. But we'll see how it goes.
And the moderator will have a seating plan for us?
You'll sit to my left, and Tom will sit to my right. You'll sit to my left, and Tom will sit to my right, is that...
That's a plan, and just stick it to it. Good, all right, great, so I don't think we've got anything more on the special town meeting prep.
I did mention this at the Area 58 board meeting as well, and I, somewhere, I'm not sure they were aware of filming.
Bree sent them the filming.
All right, they must have been a day behind.
But let me, I have it here, and I will verify.
Great.
Great. Okay, all right, very good, well, thank you both for coming.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, we'll see you two weeks, all right.
Do we need town clerk for the signing, the bond signing?
No.
No?
No, it's the clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you, Tricia. All right, good night, Barry.
Good night.
All right, so we've got a little bit of time before the tax classification hearing.
Do you want to do the bond?
Yeah, why don't we do the bond?
Okay, so it's, actually, it's John who signs this as clerk of the board, and this is to get the final bond processed for the police station. All the figures came in today, it's a 20-year bond, and we have here, just if you're curious about it, it has to do with how the town meeting voted the police station project. You can actually reduce the size of borrowing, so we have three different premiums, and basically, we save some money in the long run on it. So, I do have the backup math that I got from Colleen today, if anybody's interested.
Okay.
Do you have the rate there? I just want to record that.
I think it might be on your copy.
Okay.
It looks like it's blended, it's a varying, it's a fixed rate, but it varies from year to year.
Oh, I see, okay.
I think she said 2-point-something when we spoke a little earlier.
It was 3.75, maybe, okay.
Do we need a vote on this?
Yes, so if you could please take a vote to authorize the clerk of the Board of Selectmen to sign that paperwork to finalize the bond for the police station project.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize John Trainer as the clerk of the Board of Selectmen to sign the bond paperwork for the police station.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
It's a great-looking police.
It is. Also, too, while we're waiting for them, so on the equipment operator appointment, that would be with the starting salary of $24 per hour, which I've already talked to wage and personnel about, it's within their range, it's less than the prior person was getting, but it was what was necessary to get this person who has the licenses necessary.
And we approve the appointment?
Yes, I have that here, so that's good, hoping that he can start next week.
Right.
All right, so that I have to bring to Colleen. This was to sign the, for the Council on Aging, for their formula grant. This is the grant that they get every year, and if, Christine, if you could sign this. It goes through June 30th, but the timing on this, from what Barbara said, is a little strange, it seems like they get it later and later into the year. So, is that... Do you want me to do my update while we wait?
Yeah, why don't we?
So, we're in the process of switching everybody over to plimptontown.org email. So, Christine, we can make arrangements for you at some point soon. It's still a little bit glitchy.
Okay.
I've been getting bits and pieces from different department heads, some kind of wondering what's going on here, and to be honest, it was kind of a surprise to me that we were, first, we weren't doing it, then we were doing it, then it was slow, then it all happened today, so it's taking a long time for people's emails to update.
So, are the old emails still functioning?
They're still functioning, but what he did today is he's making it so anything sent to the old automatically gets funneled into the new.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, it's just taking a long time to almost like backlog all that data. It's making it so that if you log into the new email, you have everything from the old email box, so that you don't have to keep toggling back and forth, so it uploaded everything to the new server, and it just took a lot longer than we thought today.
I imagine it would, yeah.
So, it's plimpton...
Plimptontown.org.
Plimpton Town is one word?
Yep. Dot org, so a lot less dots.
Okay.
So, for the time being, those of us that are using the old address...
You're fine.
All right.
People should still receive your emails, and people can send from the old accounts.
How long is it going to do that for? I mean, when should we switch, a month from now, or...
I think that people should probably, if they're on any mailing list, or even with people that they know that frequently email them, should start giving out the new address, and then at some point, maybe it's six months, we shut down the old one.
Okay.
It's not costing us that much in the grand scheme of things to have the old one up and running, but...
Okay.
I have a meeting next week in Carver, and it's also the same day, we have to complete a webinar as part of receiving the Housing Choice Grant, so I've opted to have Brigitte and Christine Kelly participate in the webinar, so that we meet that compliance, and so that we're all on the same page, both financially and in terms of myself and Bree, what needs to happen, like, if it's a reimbursement program.
So, you have to have three people on this, is that the...
They wanted somebody from financial offices, and then somebody who's like an administrative assistant who might help process the paperwork.
And they're just going to do an updated program?
Less than an hour, yeah, they're going to have to log in on their computer and watch the webinar. I met with the Wage and Personnel Board earlier, they're going to be working on restructuring some things within the bylaw, making it a little bit more clear and concise, and kind of cleaning up some of the language. They're also working on getting updated job descriptions for all of the positions that come under the bylaw, so they're doing a lot of good work.
So, where do they all end up, the job descriptions?
The answer right now is nowhere, like, the ones that I have, I keep on my town computer to access those, but what we want to do is create almost like an archive digitally and have it on the town's website, so that if people are curious and want to know, what's the job description for X position, they can just click on it and upload it. Same thing for the bylaw itself, and the updated classification chart, when that gets updated every year at town meeting. So, we're going to be working on their little page within the town's website and seeing if we can get that to be more effective.
Yeah, that'd be really good, and in general, that work to consolidate that on the website, and probably over time with all the other policies and stuff that we have all over the place.
That we want to do, and then one of their long-term goals, which I said I would assist them with, once we have all the job descriptions, they'd like to send something out to all the department heads, maybe annually, and just say, these are your job descriptions, are these positions still relevant, are they filled, has anything changed, would you care to update? That way, we're not left when we have to hire somebody, looking around, trying to figure out if there was ever a job description.
Okay, great idea.
That'd be great.
So, the cost for printing and mailing the warrant, looks like it's going to come in somewhere around $1,500.
Wow.
Because it has to be folded and the little stickies, and there's just not enough turnaround time from when it was signed and posted to going to print for us to use the sheriff's department.
Okay.
So, we'll have to figure that out when the invoice comes in for that. I'm working for the town campus committee on coming up with a list of issues at the different town-owned buildings. I'm putting it in a spreadsheet format, so that I can print it for them, but also, so I can just send them the Excel file, and then we can modify it as needed. And I'm also trying to see if we can get estimates for some of the work while we're doing it, so that part's going fine. I sent Kelly from BAT an email, so we're trying to get something together with her and Charlie Seelig, so hopefully I hear back from her in the next day or so.
Great.
And that's it for my update.
All right, so we're just waiting for the assessors.
Assessors.
Okay. 7:45, 6:45, sorry.
This is a minor point, but back to the job descriptions that get updated every year, we probably should do that in a way that we keep the old job description, if any legal issue...
Well, like revision one, revision two.
Yeah.
Ideally, if somebody's hired, you should have the job description, so that...
Right, exactly.
The expectations are...
Right, exactly, we want to have that, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we don't have eight minutes for open session, but we did do the executive session minutes, didn't you do those?
I'm sure I did, I didn't bring them.
All right, why don't we hold both the minutes, then?
Oh, my God.
Okay, and that was for, no, 11:18.
Oh, that's 11:04, 11:18, I may not have printed.
Because you were here, you were here, right.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, why don't we just hold them?
I'll send them out tomorrow.
Okay. All right, well, do you want to do rants and raves or anything while we're waiting?
Sure.
Okay. Want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I went to the annual Denet Thanksgiving Feast, which was fantastic, highlighted the year, every year, and so another shout-out to CASA, they do an excellent job, lots of volunteers there, it was just a fun time, and the spirit of the town was there. The Boy Scouts are selling wreaths, another volunteer effort, they always do, they do a great job, they're uptown at the gas station, and the painting is just about done in the old pot, it looks good, the sheriff's department did a stellar job, it's just...
We'll have to go take a peek. Okay, all right, my rave would be the upcoming Pancake Breakfast.
Yes.
Isn't it this Sunday? Is it Saturday?
Sat.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
Do you have the details about it?
Details is show up ready to serve.
What time to start?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, and this is open to all town residents?
Everybody, I think it's $7 for adults, and I can't remember, I'd have to go on the site.
It's on their Facebook page?
Yes, it's on their Facebook page, under the Fire Department. Santa's going to be there at nine or so.
Okay.
Okay, probably Mrs. Santa, too.
Nice.
Yep, and there'll be some guest service.
Perfect.
I hear two of us are going to be there.
Yeah, I'm going to try, and you said eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
That's when it starts, when do you guys, are you going to be there, like 7:30?
I'm going to be there, like 7:30, yeah.
Okay, and we're what, are we actually cooking?
No, they'll do the cooking, I think all we're doing is just serving.
Okay, okay, excellent.
So, let's see, a rave, I guess, recently had the opportunity to sit with Mark Robinson from the Cape Cod Compact came up, I sat in, probably as a representative CPA, CPC, open space representative, and we sat with a private citizen that might have some land changes, and it was just a pleasure to deal with people that, the family in general, a big family, was interested in doing right by the land, and just nice that there are those proactive opportunities, I think we've learned over the years, to begin to look at these projects proactively before we get into a crisis situation, and so it was just fun to have a cooperative effort, it may take a long time to bring to fruition, but just a nice chance to try.
There you go, start somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
The assessors aren't coming.
Okay.
They canceled, they want to come and see us at the Denet School at 6:15 on December 16th.
Okay.
So, they're going to re-advertise, they're not ready.
Okay, all right, so...
This was the highlight of the year, dealing with the tax classification hearing.
So, we will not be having a tax classification hearing today, it will be postponed until the special town meeting, prior to the special town meetings. Okay, all right, very good, well, we don't have anything else unless you have...
Do we, do we have a schedule for upcoming meetings, just...
Well, we've got...
Yes, we have December 16th at 6:00, and then we were doing January 6th, and then January 27th, and we're scheduling the Harju Cranberry Public Hearings on the 27th of January.
So, almost certainly, I'll miss the 6th, and I absolutely hate missing meetings, I think in the last five and a half years, I've missed about two or three, but I won't be here for that one, and I'll be thrilled to be here for the others.
Okay.
The only other thing I can think of is the fire station renovation is moving along. Hopefully, we'll have cabinets and appliances for the Pancake Breakfast.
Nice.
Yeah.
Be nice to get a little tour and see what they've been doing.
Yeah.
So, trailer timeline?
So, the trailer, missed the Thanksgiving deadline.
Darn.
But now he's talking January.
Somebody wants to buy it, though, there's another town interested.
Yes.
Yeah.
We would have to go through the proper disposition of town-owned property and process.
We were talking to them, did they actually want it?
I think so.
Great.
That's a Christmas miracle.
Yeah.
Miracle one, Christmas one.
All right, so that's it for tonight, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.